Meeting to order, roll call. McCarrigan here, Scanlon here, Caldwell here, Vidlac here, Solomon here. Join me in the pleasure allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No, you're fine.
Three, for public information, a copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is available for review. It's above Tom. Four, notice of changes in the agenda by the city clerk. Additions may not be made to this agenda less than twenty-four hours before the beginning of the meeting and must add it under item five of this agenda. Do we have any changes?
No changes, your honor.
Okay. Five, citizens with business not scheduled on the agenda as required by state law, no matter may be considered under this item unless council determines that the matter requires emergency action. Do we have any emergency actions? Okay. Six, closed session. Council reserves the right to enter into closed session if deemed necessary, if the item is on the agenda as per section eighty-four dash fourteen-ten of the Nebraska revised statutes. Seven, Scottsbluff Youth Council. Have any youth councils tonight? No? Eight, public comments. The purpose of this agenda item is to allow for public comments of items for potential discussion at a future council meeting. Comments brought to the council are for information only. The council will not take any action on the item except for referring it to staff to address for placement on a future council agenda. This comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Do we have any public comments?
I have a question. Jerry Stricker, I live in northeast part of Scottsbluff. And I appreciate you put this back on the agenda again. And I had a discussion with the city manager. And as you know, I've probably been here several times, seemingly hounding you to do this. But anyway, I don't, I, in the discussions, I thought it was fair that, that we decided, or not we decided, we talked about perhaps if there was an appetite to do this every meeting, to do it every quarter or every other month. And I'd encourage if that's the case, because I had found out another avenue to get information to you via the agenda request item, is that you post and make this kind of a regular, so it's predictable when it is, like the first Monday of the quarter, something along those lines. Just so that it's not a hit and miss of when it might be. And that's all. Thanks.
Ten, public hearings. A, council to conduct a public hearing.
Oh, mayor.
Oh, sorry.
You gotta do the consent.
Oh, oh, I missed the consent calendar. I crossed it off. Consent calendar, items in the consent calendar are proposed for adoption by one action for all items unless any member of the council requests that an item be considered separately. Do we have any questions or comments on the consent calendar?
I'm going to approve the consent calendar.
Okay, do we have a second?
No second.
Okay, motion by Scanlon, second by Vidlac. Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please. Caldwell?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Vidlac?
Yes.
Scanlon, yes. McCarrigan? Yes. Now, ten, public hearings. Council to conduct a public hearing set for this date at six P M. To consider a rezone of lot five, block one, Country Club View Edition, commonly identified as six seventeen West nineteenth Street, from C two neighborhood and retail commercial to R one A, single-family residential. We'll open the public hearing.
Tom Shangle filling in for Zach Globius while he's out. This is the property at six seventeen West nineteenth. It's a rezone to expand the existing R one A district to the south. It meets the minimum lot size. The one thing it doesn't meet is the minimum width. But this is not seen as an issue as it was plotted in nineteen sixteen. And the rest of the subdivision is also fifty foot wide, so it's conforming, non-conforming. The purpose of this rezone is to allow the property owner to make improvements to the property and remove commercial utility rates. This was brought to the planning commission, they made a positive recommendation to the city council to approve this rezone. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to pass this on to Zach.
Well, I had one for Zach, but I just guess we're just doing this one lot, because I see some other residential spots there.
We're just doing this one right now, but in the future, we're gonna look at the rest of those residential lots as well.
Okay.
The process is different. If we were to do all of them, we would have a lot more steps. But we have the property owner requesting this, so.
Okay.
Okay.
And if you remember, we had a homeowner in front of us, it's been a while now, that couldn't secure funding for a remodel because he was in the C two zone. So this is fixing that problem too.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. We'll close the public hearing. Eleven, resolution and ordinances. A, council to consider action on the first reading of the ordinance dealing with the rezone of lot five, block one, Country Club View Edition from C two neighborhood and retail commercial to R one A, single-family residential. Okay, Kim?
An ordinance of the city of Scottsbluff, Nebraska, dealing with zoning, amending section twenty-five dash one dash four by updating the official zoning district map to show that lot five, block one, Country Club View Edition to the city of Scottsbluff, Scottsbluff County, Nebraska, currently zoned as C dash two neighborhood and retail commercial, will now be included in R dash one A, single-family residential, repealing prior section twenty-five dash one dash four, providing for an effective date and providing for publication in pamphlet form.
Okay. B, council to consider action on the first reading of the ordinance dealing with the rezones of lots one through four, block one, Triple Peak Subdivision, from A R, agricultural residential, to O P, office and professional.
An ordinance of the city of Scottsbluff, Nebraska, dealing with zoning, amending section twenty-five dash one dash four by updating the official zoning district map to show that lots one, two, three, and four, block one, Triple Peak Subdivision, to the city of Scottsbluff, Scottsbluff County, Nebraska, situated in the northeast quarter of section twenty-four, township twenty-two north, range fifty-five west of the sixth principal meridian, Scottsbluff County, Nebraska, which was previously zoned as agricultural residential, A R, to office and professional, O P, repealing prior section twenty-five dash one dash four, providing for an effective date and providing for publication in pamphlet form.
Okay. C, council to discuss and consider action on the preliminary plat, final plat and contract for public improvements of lots one through four, block one, Triple Peak Subdivision, and authorize the mayor to sign the resolution and contract for public improvements.
Okay, your honor, this, this is a replat and final plat together. And we do have representatives from the project here too, if you have any questions. But this is an area that is the side, well, it's across the street from the college and just east and a little bit south of the S W B C building. I'm sure you've heard about the project. So there's a lot of information here. And like I said, there's representatives from the project here if you have questions. So. And the next few items are Triple Peaks as well.
Yes, I just had a few, just general ones. So the total is, it's about thirty-three acres. It's just eighteen that we're looking at that's gonna be developed right away. Does that sound right? Okay. And the canal company, we're all good there. So there's, we're good on that side.
Yep.
Yeah, do you wanna come on?
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Brenda Anderson, and I'm representing Deidre Brunner, who's not here tonight. But I'd be hopefully happy to answer your questions. So yes, the total lots, acres equal around that thirty, thirty-three acres. The area below the canal will remain the Quint's property with an easement that will allow a street to run in from the Staples Street that runs up to, right next to Staples, and it'll go up across the canal and then through the development over to Eighteenth Avenue. And so, reconstruction and Baker Associates have been designing the infrastructure.
Yeah.
Taking the project underway. Yep, the plat.
Okay.
Yep, and Development Services, Zach is.
Yep.
And MC Schaff for us have reviewed it, so.
Okay.
And it's quite a project. Very nice.
The goal is that they'll start with one part of the area with the hope of eventually subdividing and allowing for expansion as other places, other businesses, other entities may want to develop. So we thought it'd be easier to start with a smaller plat, and then we could always replat a little later because you're limited to three. So we wanted to start small.
Okay.
All right.
Any idea when you would wanna get started with all of this, with the construction?
I know they're wanting to start as soon as possible. So after the third reading, they're looking for the TIF funding, and I think they're ready to start working.
Okay.
Any other questions?
There were some engineering documents on the drainage, and I think we're all good on that then? Okay.
Yeah, yeah. That was gone over extensively.
Okay.
The drainage ones.
I think we're good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
A, motion by Scanlon, second by Caldwell. Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please. Solomon?
Yes.
Vidlac?
Yes.
Scanlon, yes. McCarrigan?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.
D, council to discuss and consider vote on approving request of annexation of Triple Peak Subdivision.
Under the statute of eighteen thirty-three oh one, when a plat's brought before the council and it's approved, along with a request for annexation, which the letter's up there, we are supposed to procedurally have the council vote on whether or not they would approve an annexation of this territory to the city. And then upon an affirmative vote, we'll bring an ordinance to the council at the next meeting once it's approved. It's a little different than chapter sixteen annexation, because this is under eighteen thirty-three oh one. But when they provide the plat and it's approved, and then the request for annexation, it says the council shall vote on whether or not to do it. And if it's approved, then we're to bring the ordinance at the next meeting to start the reading process. And if you'll recall, we cannot waive three readings on an annexation statute, or ordinance.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Caldwell, second by Scanlon. Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please. Scanlon?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.
Vidlac?
Yes.
E, council to consider action on the first reading of the ordinance, amending section twenty dash one dash three, changing name of Easton Drive to Eighteenth Avenue and the Quint Commercial Tracks.
Now, for our ordinance, this is all related to the Triple Peaks. But when the Quince, Quince, excuse me, originally planted the first lot that's on the Frontage Road in between Target and Staples, that's already been planted. There is a street that is, goes through there, and it's called Easton Drive. So in order to change this to Eighteenth Avenue all the way through from Frontage Road up to Twenty-seventh Street, we have to amend our ordinance, our code, through an ordinance. So all's we're doing is, Easton Drive has never been developed, but it is plotted that way, so we need to change that street.
Okay.
So it needs to be first ran in. We'll move on.
An ordinance of the city of Scottsbluff, Nebraska, amending the municipal code to update twenty dash one dash three, dealing with a change in the name of the street adjacent to track one, block two, Quint Commercial Track from Easton Drive to Eighteenth Avenue, and providing for an effective date and providing for publication in pamphlet form.
Okay. F, council to consider action on the first reading of the ordinance to consider a plat vacation of block two residency addition, commonly identified as twenty-two oh four, Circle Drive, Scottsbluff, Nebraska.
Okay, this is the residency just up the street. They're gonna replat their property in consideration for a future project that they're getting ready to do. And they're just splitting off, they're going to split off a property, so. This is them doing that, and Dave's here if you have any questions about this too.
Okay.
Excuse me, I'm Dave Schaff with MC Schaff and Associates. As city managers suggested, they're looking at a future project, and this property has been replatted, limited three times. And so in order to replat the property to approve or go through the next process, they have to vacate this plat. That's what this process will do. And then in the, in the future meetings, we'll come back with a replat that would allow us to, or allow them to develop the property as what their master plan is going to show in the future.
Thanks, Dave.
Thanks.
All right.
An ordinance of the city of Scottsbluff, Nebraska, vacating block two residency addition to the city of Scottsbluff, Scottsbluff County, Nebraska, a subdivision and replat of block five, northeast second addition, replat number two, in addition to the city of Scottsbluff, Scottsbluff County, Nebraska, and providing for publication in pamphlet form.
All right, twelve, petitions, communications, and public input. A, council to discuss and consider action on a special designated liquor license for Next Young Professionals to serve beer, wine, and distilled spirits at the Eighteenth Street Plaza on June twenty-second from three P M. to ten P M. For a beer and wine festival.
Hi, I'm Taylor Ekman with Next Young Professionals, and I'm the president this year. And what questions do you have? Or do you want me to kinda talk about the Beer and Wine Fest?
Sure.
Okay. So the Beer and Wine Fest is an annual fundraising event that Next Young Professionals puts on. We've done it in different places throughout Scottsbluff and Gearing, because we're not specifically just Scottsbluff. And what we do with it is, we use it to raise as much money as we can, obviously, but also use it as a networking event, per se, so that people can come, or professionals, not just people, professionals in the area, but anybody else, of course, to raise money and then give it back to something else in the community. So we've donated recently to the zoo. Last year, we donated nine thousand dollars because of this event. We donated to Buckford Riding Academy the year before. We donated five thousand there, Northfield Haven, five thousand there the year before. And with that, like I said, we've done the event at the plaza. We've done it at, in Gearing at the stadium, at the baseball park, and then the zoo this last year. So what our hope is for this year, with the help of Flyover, has kind of helped coach us. We're trying to get breweries from across the state and potentially, if it's able to happen, Wyoming or Colorado breweries as well, to come to the event and bring their own craft brews. Couple different reasons there. A, we don't have to try to get as many volunteers to come help, because that's been challenging for us. But also to get Nebraska beers and like show their craft, but then also potentially get people from across the state to come to our event as well and support our area. And the reason Flyover is so excited about that is because they go to their events across the state. This is not a, like cohesion with the Flyover. They're just kind of helping with any questions we have and kind of getting our name to these other breweries. So with that, and then we've also had local distilleries and other distilleries want to bring spirits, and that's kinda why we've added that this year to that, because I personally am not a beer drinker, and unless it's Moscato, and I can only drink three different Moscosas every time anyway. So other people have also showed interest in like, can we get spirits in there also, you know, in the, in the tasting? And so that's where we've implemented that as well. And so we're already, we moved the date up as well. I don't know if anybody noticed that. Normally, normally the event is in like September, you know, fall-ish time. We chose to move it to June just to kinda see if maybe the event would have better attendance being earlier versus later in like the summer season. Just 'cause, you know, it's been a tough few years for everybody, and our event as well. I mean, yes, we were able to donate a lot of money, but we got a lot of sponsorships. We live in a great community that's willing to help with that stuff. So, yeah, I would, we would appreciate if you guys would be willing to approve that for us.
Could you talk a little bit about your process as far as checking IDs?
Yep, so we have, so we have eleven board members this year, which is great. It's more than we've had in the past. We usually have at least two member, board members at the gate, checking IDs. Anybody that comes in, we do not allow anyone under twenty-one on the premises at all for the event. Not even vendors are allowed to bring anybody under twenty-one. Like, as far as like the food vendors and stuff. Then we, or they have to have a ticket, so they either have to order it in advance or buy it onsite as well. And if it's something that you guys want or recommend, we can do wristbands. But since we don't allow anybody under twenty-one, we don't really see the point in that, because you can't come in anyway. And then security-wise too, again, with all of the board members, but we do, we are gonna have volunteers no matter what, because there's not really wine breweries, you know, that are gonna come. So we'll have wine tables too. So we'll have volunteers, but then we'll have board members manning all of the entrances on the plaza there, so all the gates. There's the two on the west side, the two on the east side, and then the one on the north and south for the alleyway. So those will be manned by board members throughout the entire event. Oh, and I guess some other things about the event were, somebody may notice too, the event's longer this year as well. We're hoping to, again, kind of have it a little more fun. Oh, and I didn't say we're donating to Life Change Connection, which is another local nonprofit this year. But, so with that, we're gonna have a cornhole tournament within the event. And then at three, I think we decided, three or four. Oh, it must be four, because we start at three. At four o'clock, there's gonna be yoga, so yoga in the plaza. And then, so yoga and beer likely do it Flyover, because that's pretty popular. And then the cornhole tournament, and then there'll be a live band for the remainder of the event.
Any other questions or comments?
Do you know how many years the Beer and Wine Fest has gone on until? This is the thirteenth annual, yes. And over that, over that time, I don't know the exact number, just 'cause some, you know, they've gone through different people at the chamber. But I know for a fact we've donated over thirty-four thousand dollars to different things in the community. We've donated to the plaza, to the baseball park in Gearing as well. I know the plaza a couple times, and then a couple other things and the ones that I mentioned earlier as well.
What's the Life Change Group that you're donating to?
Okay, so Life Change Connection was actually started by Neil Blumenkamp, the owner of Runza. It, it, the goal of Life Change Connection is to help people living with diabetes, however that may be for them, whether it's helping pay for their insulin, helping with any changes in their home, because diabetes, I mean, it affects people differently. And so a lot of diabetics end up with potential amputations and stuff like that. And so they need accommodations made, and so they help with those types of things. It's a great organization.
Thank you.
All right, do you have a motion to approve?
A motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Solomon, second by Caldwell. Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please. Vidlac?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Scanlon?
Yes.
Thirteen, council reports informational only. This item is intended for council members to update and inform other council members of meetings attended since the last city council meeting. Do we have any meeting reports?
We got a short one for the zoo. Gearing High School donated fifteen hundred dollars from the fundraiser for the zoo. And they're welding pretty fast on the cage, and they'll probably be done way before April with the mountain lion cage. So it's coming along really well.
Parks director started today. Matt Clark?
Oh, that's good.
Okay.
I attended the human trafficking meeting at the civic center that was offered. So there was some great information there and ways to become more aware of what could possibly be happening in communities, including ours, unfortunately.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Madam mayor, I was wondering if we could go up to maybe revisit the public comments section.
Okay. Do we have any public comments? Any additional?
Mayor?
Uh, sure. Is he your name?
Lord Will Fernandez.
Okay, and then you have three minutes.
One more, please. I wanna start my three minutes with saying.
I wanna start my three minutes with saying thank you very much to the board members that did respond to my emails. I appreciate you very much, as well as this job. I know it's very difficult, and I know it's very hard to always listen to the people and listen to millions and thousands of people and always know what's right. I understand the difficulty in that. So thank you for your time and being here today. I'm gonna read something off the school, high school parent-student handbook from twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-four. Scottsbluff High School Code Ethics, be present, be engaged, be productive, be inclusive, be empathetic, and be understanding. I'm gonna skip over to a couple pages. Sorry about this, guys. Well, it's not looking out of my favor. Apologies, guys. But my, my reason for here today is there's a video of Sebastian Boyle picking up a young man and slamming him down unconscious for several seconds. That's why I bring up the Scottsbluff High School thing. There's also a matrix in there that says that assault should be disciplined by nine days or more plus an expulsionary hearing. It was not done. Sebastian Boyle was only suspended for three days, and that is it. That is not the way an assault should be handled in this Scottsbluff High School. The matrix says more of it. The people who wrote it mean more of it. So I think that should be of what help. And the same matrix for just the regular people, kind of the same thing. But there was a young man last Friday that was also assaulted, and we're trying to get the video for that. And the parent is being, uh, bombarded with just all these outrageous claims. And they brought up a great law, it's called FERBA, F-E-R-B-A. And it gives the power to the parent that if something happens within a video, they have the right to at least see it, at least examine it, be aware of it. They're not honoring that. They use that in order to block us. It should, there should be more done to empower the parent. There should be meetings to empower the parent to do this stuff. When your kid is hurt in any school or in this district, any school in this nation, there should be a meeting with the parent. This assault happened at seven fifty-something. She wasn't notified until ten thirty that day. They had a whole assembly before they called the parent. This is outrageous. Sorry, guys. If I was a little more prepared, I wouldn't have got so emotional. But this is a feeling that from my heart, we each need to do more to protect our children. And I bring this subject to City Hall because I already had a meeting with Dr. Dick Andrew, Andrew Dick. And the assault happened in November. This is well into February. The, we should not move a snail's pace when it comes to the state D of our children. I appreciate you guys so much. And once again, the people who responded, I appreciate it so much, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other public comments? Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Do you have a second?
A second.
Okay, motion by Colwell, second by Scanlon. Call the roll, please.
McCarrigan.
Yes.
Scanlon.
Yes.
Colwell.
Yes.
Vidlac.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.